That was fun. Okay. We will now call the order. Tuesday, June 5th, City Council meeting. I need approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any consent agenda for the minutes?
I move approval.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Go. Public comment phase. Anybody wish to have public comments? Sir.
Okay. Sure. Okay. Thanks. My name is Jeff Harrison and I'm here on behalf of myself and my wife, Jennifer Harrison. Our mailing address is 11445 Northwest Permian Drive, Portland, Oregon 97229. We also have a home on North Laurel directly across from the Nicholson-Pand unit debacle. I'm here tonight to ask you about that issue. On March 8th, 2016, you gave your final approval for Phase 3 of the development despite widespread and vociferous opposition, including your own planning commission. You wrote and approved 17 conditions of approval for that project. Over two years later, where there was once a beautiful tree property that fit the character of our neighborhood, we now see a neglected and largely denuded lot with a prominent rubble pile from the demolished 101-year-old historic cottage, the orange protective tree netting lying on the ground close to the tree instead of where the arborist recommended 15 feet away, and plastic pipe left out for months. But by far the ugliest component is the 125-foot-long, 12-foot-tall, interlocking, concrete, industrial-looking wall. The wall was among the very top concerns we had then, and our fears and intuitions were well-founded. Nicholson promised you this would be a living wall, and it would be planted and landscaped, and that you wouldn't even be able to see it because it would all be green. It isn't. It hasn't been landscaped, there are no plantings, and it certainly isn't living. It is an ugly eyesore, an ugly concrete eyesore, and is a visual testament to your approval. As we said then, it won't fit the character of our neighborhood, or any neighborhood in Cannon Beach. It is a scar on what was once a beautiful neighborhood. Imagine if you had to live next to it. You yourselves wrote an approval condition for this wall. It is number 17, and it reads as follows: Before permits for the driveway retaining the wall are approved, the applicant shall provide to the city an executed contract with a professional landscaper responsible for the installation and maintenance of plant materials on the wall, and shall provide a timeline for the establishment of plantings on the wall. If plants are not established within those timelines, the city may take any necessary enforcement actions to assure that the requirements of the final plan and this condition are met. While we were never given an explanation on why the city chose to go to such great lengths to accommodate Nicholson's wishes, at a minimum, we expected you to keep your word and fulfill the promises of your own conditions. Here are the salient points of approval condition number 17 and what has happened instead. Number one, as per your condition, Nicholson was required to submit an executed agreement. Instead, he submitted and you accepted an unsigned estimate. Number two, as per your condition, the agreement was required to be with a landscape professional. Mr. Mayor, you may recall that Nicholson telling you that Beth Holland was to be the landscaper, your response was, "Well, that's good enough for me," and he got your vote. Instead, you accepted an unsigned estimate from a lawn care person who didn't even have a business license. Number three, as per your condition, the agreement was required to have a timeline for the establishment of plantings. Instead, there is no timeline because there is no executed agreement. The wall was built almost a year and a half ago. No plants have been planted. Bare concrete is all we see and lots of it. I think it's fair and reasonable for us to expect you to enforce your own approval conditions and that Nicholson would have to follow the rules like the rest of us. He hasn't, and there have been no repercussions. I don't want to hear about current letters or the option of giving him more time to comply like we heard staff suggest during a planning commission hearing. We've lost confidence. I'm here tonight to ask why the permit was issued to build this concrete monstrosity when the requirements of your own approval condition that you wrote, that you approved, were so clearly not met. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anybody other comments? Hearing none, we'll move on. First item, ordinance, consideration of ordinance 1804 for the purpose of repealing or replacing sections. How about contracting? Tammy?
Counsel saw this at a previous work session regarding the, or it could have been a council meeting, can't remember at this point. Counsel's previously seen this. This is really administrative changes to our code to align our code with the state statute on, in contracting, specifically regarding direct awards. So with these amendments, the staff would be able to make a direct award in the amount of $10,000 or under without soliciting competitive quotes. Of course, staff is always, has the prerogative to solicit competitive quotes if they want to for any amount, but this would allow them to do so without competitive quotes at $10,000 or under. It would also allow the city manager to authorize contracts for goods and services under the amount of $150,000. If they're over $150,000, then the city manager would be required to seek council approval. Staff recommends that the city manager have authority to award public improvement contracts and personal services contracts valued at $100,000 or less before seeking council approval. Staff recommends these ordinance changes. Subject to your questions?
No questions? This is an ordinance, so we need two motions, two separate motions, one to read the ordinance twice by title and then one to adopt the ordinance.
I have a question, Bruce, I guess. Give me an example of the $10,000, maybe a recent example of when that would have occurred.
When we did the analysis for the City Hall, that contract came in a little over $5,000. And so that was the kind of thing, and it was a, that was a situation where the architect or the person that we selected had previous experience with the structure, you know, already knew, and had actually done some designs, and so thinking they probably were the best positioned person, and that was, that's the kind of thing that we would have been able to just go ahead and move forward with.
And this is money that's already budgeted, not for that particular item, but there is money for that, to cover that type of expense, so it's not outside of the budget, it's just something which you could spend without coming, going to the council and saying, "Oh, listen, I want to do this." You could act quickly and, you know, concisely.
It's really a time issue.
Is that answer your question, sir? Okay. Do we have a motion?
I move that we read ordinance 18-04 twice by title only.
Seconded.
Colleen?
Council President Bedfield?
Yes.
Counsel Better?
Aye.
Counsel Olbuthy?
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy?
Yes.
Yes. Tammy?
For the purpose of repealing and replacing sections 2.08.070, 2.08.080, and 2.08.100 of Chapter 2.08, Public Contracting Regulations of the Cannon Beach Municipal Code, Ordinance Number 18-04, for the purpose of repealing and replacing sections 2.08.070, 2.08.080, and 2.08.100 of Chapter 2.08, Public Contracting Regulations of the Cannon Beach Municipal Code, Ordinance Number 18-04.
Thank you. Motion to adopt.
I move we approve ordinance 1804. Seconded.
Seconded. Any discussion? Colleen?
Counsel Better?
Aye.
Counsel Olbuthy?
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy?
Yes.
Council President Bedfield?
Yes.
Mayor Stidl?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution, considerate resolution 1805, interfund transfer for recycling department budget adjustment. Who wants to take this one?
The staff report is to request an intra-fund transfer, recycle department budget. We're at a point in the budget where it appears we're going to be very close to overrun approximately $2,000. This is associated with the fact that when the budget was approved in a '17, '18 budget year, they didn't anticipate the Assistant Public Works position continuing beyond the four months. Resolution 17-15 approved that position to remain for a full budget year, and in order to fund the salary for that position, money taken from various buckets in the budget to deal with support that. One being the recycle budget. They pulled out $3,554 from the materials and services and $3,000 from the contingency. And at this point in the budget, it looks like we could overrun $2,000. We may not. Our goal was to not overrun it, but this is my last chance to come to you and ask for the budget amendment. We have the unexpected repair of the roof out there. If that was something, have we not experienced that? I may not be here asking for the funds. And of course, our freight for cargo and our recollection expenses are much higher this year than they were the previous year. So staff recommends that we reduce our spending authority in our roads budget by $2,000 and increase it at the recycling by $2,000. Projects for the roads department that remain for the rest of this year are covered, so it won't impact the playoffs in roads. And staff recommends.
I move approval of resolution 18-05.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Colleen?
Counsel Olbuthy?
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy?
Yes.
Council President Bedfield?
Yes.
Counsel Better?
Aye.
Mayor Stidl?
Yes. Motion passes. Consideration of Resolution 1806, Establishing Parking Management Fees for Fiscal Year 2018-19, Updating Resolution 1505. Dan, Bruce? Karen? Karen. Okay.
This is a follow-up to your February 21st work session that you had, and you noted that during the bid of order that the Budget Committee wanted to increase the parking lot maintenance revenue. It was not increased last year, the last time that the amount of the fees were adjusted. It was in 2015. And based on the average annual percentage increase in the CPI, new, all cities from the calendar year just completed an increase of 2.5 percent, which will increase approximately $36,309 compared to the current year's $35,230. This would make parking maintenance fees $125.20.
Okay.
They're currently $122.16. Staff recommends.
Karen, how many spaces are included in this?
You know, that's a good question for our town.
But it's all the spaces that fit into the downtown city lot, or is it the midtown lot also?
It's my understanding that it is all our downtown parking lots, so it's the three parking lots. They go behind the post office and the other two, October parking lots.
So was this proposed increase just based on the CPI, or is it based on actual experience of expenses in operating the parking?
I'd like to say that, but I'll give you an example of an actual expense. We just got a quote to consider paving that this coming July, one budget. Did came back at $76,000. So I bet the $35,000, and that's a drop of the bucket to me, but that $35,000 includes wages and whatnot, so there's a subset of that that I could use towards that paving effort, but it goes. We have to go a long way before that $76,000 is recovered.
So the paving comes out of the roads fund or just the general fund?
We have a parking lot fund.
Okay, in addition to the revenue from the fees.
Any other question? Discussion? Need a motion then?
I move we adopt Resolution 1806, 18-06, for the purpose of establishing parking management fees for fiscal year 2018-19. I'll second it.
Any discussion? Colleen?
Counsel McCarthy?
Yes.
Council President Bedfield?
Yes.
Counsel Better?
Aye.
Counsel Olbuthy?
Yes.
Mayor Stidl?
Yes.
Good. We're moving right along. Consideration of a Utility Relief Request Appeal. Louis Barber? Guess that's you again.
Third time's a charm.
Yeah.
This staff report is associated with an application that Mrs. Barber put in, associated with an outdoor shower that was inadvertently left on. She applied for relief. Initially, staff reviewed the application and signed off to honor the relief request because the outdoor shower was not connected to our sewer system. During the May 15th Public Works Committee meeting, after further review, the committee voted to not approve, deny the request, and the reason for that is, in our MUDI code, it clearly states that outside faucets that do not have a locking mechanism on them would not be considered for relief. So the committee recommended that in the letter of denial to the resident, it would be explaining, recommend that they put a locking mechanism on their outdoor faucet to prevent future issues such as this. Based on the MUDI code and the qualifications of outdoor faucets and showers, the staff recommends that the request be denied.
Any questions? Need a motion then?
Sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. We have a presentation. I'm sorry.
Introduce yourself.
Good evening, afternoon. I'm Louis Barker, and I live on East Jefferson Street, 164 East Jefferson. And I'm here to address the appeal that the water bill decision was made by the Public Works Committee that met on May 15th. They met on May 15th, and they, excuse me, and I wanted to discuss that just a little bit and also talk a little bit about goodwill, and I think that's a key point here. I have, I have owned this cabin on East Jefferson Street for over 40 years. Our family has participated in the, in almost every Fourth of July parade. We have been in the sandcastle contests both as participants and as judges. We have supported the library. We have supported the pantry. All of these things were done in the spirit of goodwill. It seems to me that an adjustment in the water bill of $219.87 is a wonderful opportunity for the city to show some goodwill. It was my understanding that the Public Works Committee would make a fair adjustment to the $219.87 water bill. They made no adjustment. We have an outdoor shower. Some person trespassed onto our property, turned on the shower, and left it running for 30 days. An adjustment would be a wonderful opportunity for City Hall, for you people, to show that there is some goodwill. And that's it. I would add that my regular water bill is usually $47. Whether this is the point, what we need to discuss, I don't know, but I, certainly $47, double it, that's whatever, some $90, and you would show goodwill. I would so, I could accept that as a nice token from you people. Thank you. I'm more than willing to take questions.
Yes, Mr. Mayor Stidl?
Yeah.
Mr. Barker, have you taken any steps to make sure that this won't happen again in the?
Yeah, it's all done. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. That's a, that's a good question, yeah, but I got, I got the message, but.
Any other questions?
Louis, may I ask, how much did it cost to establish a locking mechanism and secure the shower?
You know, I'm not sure. Maybe it was $100, maybe $125, you know. I had to crawl get to the, but it's, I mean, I, sorry, I don't know. But I'll say $100-ish.
Thank you. I'm just curious. In that sense, I would propose for a possible equitable situation would be to reduce the cost equal to the amount that it cost him to lock it up, just as an idea. I understand that the precedent of having the ordinance, or not, it's not ordinance, but it's a rule that basically says outside faucets need to be secured, but I think that's, that would be a way of doing it. It's just a proposal.
We get these kinds of requests frequently, and we deny all of them. So I, and I understand the goodwill and all that, but I guess I say, the rules are the rules. And my biggest problem is the Public Works Committee basically listened to the arguments and ruled unanimously to deny the appeal. I'm looking for something here that justifies the counsel overturning the committee's recommendation.
I'm in the same situation. I would like to find a way. I agree with you, sir, that this would be a good opportunity for the city to show goodwill, but unfortunately, by us showing goodwill, we are setting a precedent, and we're telling the community, "Just show up here and, you know, leave your water run," and, you know, they're not going to do it on purpose, obviously, but, you know, the, the business of the city council is so important to, to the city that for us to be dealing with, you know, one appeal after another would be not good use of, of, you know, the city's time. And I'm afraid that's, you know, what we would be doing. We would be letting the community know that if you don't like a decision of something, just appeal it to the city council, and they'll give it to you. So unless you can find something unique about your situation so that we could then, you know, tell the next person, "Well, we can't give that to you because you don't, you know, you don't, you don't have a unique situation like, like this one." But for us to go against something that's clearly stated in our, you know, in our rules would be, just it wouldn't be a good move for, for us as a city council.
Well, and this is water that belongs to everybody, and waving that, you're giving it away, so it's that fiduciary responsibility to manage the assets of the city.
So can you state something that would make your situation unique, other than what you told us already?
Well, I, I think what it makes is still the word that I'm using, goodwill, and I realize there are rules and there are regulations and so on, but there is a place for goodwill. And I think this is a wonderful opportunity for you guys to step forward and help some guy out that got ripped off by some guy that came by, or girl, whoever did it. And so that's why I'm here, to say, "Hey, give me a break and, and show us the people of Cannon Beach, yeah, this committee, they can, they can look at things beside the rules."
Okay.
I think somebody else.
Is there a, could I ask if it's going to be in the form of a motion, could you use the $47 and double it and make that the bid, and it's done?
Mr. Mayor, I think Carolyn would like to speak.
Carolyn? Carolyn's a representative of the Public Works Committee.
I just wanted to give you a little bit of background on the exterior faucets. We had a, quite a large number of these type of requests in the fall of 2015, and we had a period of probably three or four that came in in the span of two months. And the committee spent about three or four meetings kind of discussing the options, the pros and cons of the way that the reutility request form at that point was written, and what the committee decided at that point was to include the line regarding exterior faucets needing locking mechanisms, and then the committee would consider those type of requests. And we felt that covered the variety of relief requests we were getting at the time. And actually, two months ago, we had two, we've had two new members on the committee in the last year, and two months ago, we actually revisited the criteria on the utility request relief form, and the committee still believe that the approach that we have stated in our, in our document is still the approach that we feel is the appropriate one to, to make sure that we are consistently evaluating the relief requests that do come in.
Karen, when was the lock mechanism piece put into the?
It was in December of 2015. It might have been January 2016 is when we inserted that all additional information in the utility request relief request form. Any other questions?
Yes, Carolyn. At that time, had you been issuing relief to residents?
No. At that time, when we got those, that spade of them coming in, we held them for a couple of months as the committee discussed what the options were, and we put the new policy in place, and then we, we addressed all of the ones that had been sitting there for a couple of months using the criteria that was put in place at the time.
I see. Thank you.
I would say that this shower has been in place for at least 20 years, so anything that they're coming up with, you know, we, we were there first. But anyway, I, given my spiel, I hope that you can remember the key word, goodwill, and I'll thank you for your, your attention.
You know, it's worth pointing out that the Public Works Committee is composed of- You know, it's worth pointing out that the Public Works Committee is composed of citizens. It's not the officials of the, of the city, so.
Mr. Barker, I'd like to say that as a, as a city councilor, sitting up here representing the city, I'm not comfortable, you know, forgiving this, I guess, or letting it go. But as a citizen and someone who appreciates what you've explained you've done to the community, I am happy to give you your $47 personally, because I, you know, I feel that you deserve it. But as a city councilor, I do not feel that I can do that. So I move the denial of the request.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Colleen?
Council President Benfield?
Yes.
Council Better?
Aye.
Council Ogilvy?
Ah, yes.
Council McCarthy?
Yes.
Mayor Stidl?
Yes. Sorry.
So hold me to it, Mr. Barker.
Next item, consideration of approving City of Cannon Beach, City Cannon Be, City, how the, Cannon Beach Academy lease. Bruce? Oh, wait, we skipped one, I'm sorry. Consideration of the Ash Street Waterline Project. Karen?
This is easy one. This is a project that you'd approved in the budget. You put it out to bid and had a bid opening this past month to award the bid. The apparent low bidder was barbecue and some site work in, at $197,448. Adequate funds have already been funded in the 2018, 2019 budget for this project. I believe you guys all know the background of the charter that the project involves. Expected start date, should you approve this, is July 9th. The application is set to be submitted. Staff recommends council allows to award the budget to barbecue, start the project July 9th.
Any questions? Okay, we need a motion to authorize?
I move approval of the, for the Ash Street Waterline Project.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Colleen?
Council Better?
Aye.
Council Ogilvy?
Yes.
Council McCarthy?
Yes.
Council President Benfield?
Yes.
Mayor Stidl?
Yes. Okay, yeah, let me try this again. Consideration of approving the City of Cannon Beach and Cannon Beach Academy lease. I got this one.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a, an annual contract, and we've had discussions with the Cannon Beach Academy representatives. And usually, these projects, these contracts start with the city manager. And so I went through the history and saw that there was a $1 a year lease when, in the first year, but that there were other numbers that were discussed, you know, being $1,000, $2,000, or something a month as they were able to progress in their, in their finances. And so I presented a, a lease that had $1,000 a month, and it was considered by the Cannon Beach Academy. And they have countered at $100 a month. And so that's kind of where we are, but, and, but I will say that I don't think that this is a situation where we're trying to maximize our investment on that property. It's, we're trying to support a program. And so whatever number you come up with will be appropriate because we're not balancing it against actual cost at this point. There's also some other discussion about swing sets and playground equipment. And based on some experiences I've had recently in previous job, I want to make sure that we had nothing to do with that and that they were responsible for maintenance and all those kinds of things, so that it would not come back on the city. So you'll see language related to that in there also.
And have they seen that language too?
Yes, and Amy is here.
Amy, is there any problem with that wording on the playground equipment?
I, I think that we were the ones who suggested it.
Okay.
I mean, we agreed with what was already written and amended it.
So Bruce, there's no problem with that wording on the playground equipment?
I wrote it, I thought it was great. But Amy's correct, they were totally cooperative on it and worked it out.
Well, when I think back about how much we used to pay for the children's center and the amount of money that we put into that annually, you know, I, I'm reluctant to, to charge much at all. I think there does need to be a legal contract, you know, obviously, to protect the city. But I'm pretty open to a pretty small amount of, of rent on it. It's, it's not enough, it's going to affect the city budget if, if we got the maximum out of it. And it is something of great value to the community, so.
I would prefer also to stick with the $1 a month that we've currently got. Any other?
And I would like to see it be an annual fee, whatever it is, rather than a monthly. It's not worth writing checks every month for a small amount.
Splitting, splitting the dollar 12 times too, I don't think. No, I think they give us a dollar, and it's good for the year.
True.
So that's current practice.
Any other questions, concerns?
My concern is how well the school is doing, that, you know, we anticipated, when we negotiated this first time, that it would be healthy enough and growing enough that $1,000, which is still well below market, would be appropriate. And I think there was an escalating scale, I can't recall now. But I, I recall the thousand was anticipated for the second year, based on assurances or at least hopes that the financial liability of the school would be sufficient to justify a higher rental. And it appears to me that's not the case.
Can we come up now with this?
Sure, I, I'd like to know about that.
Please go sign. And I do. Um, I'd like to address what you just said. We aren't, excuse me. Oh, I'm Patty Rouse, and it's P.O. Box 206 in Cannon Beach. None of us were, well, Amy was a school administrator, but when this started, it was really a grassroots effort. And so you're right, our hopes were, we thought when we opened the door, there would be a huge surge of support. And the support has been coming and growing, but it's much slower than we would have wished. There were also many expenses, as you know, because you guys helped with the fire hydrant, which we so appreciate. And we really appreciate all the support you gave us, because you kind of bent over backwards to get us in on time. And we do have a growing number of students, but like this year, we got told that our health insurance for our teachers, our employees, were going to, first we were told it was going to double, right? And then, and then it came down where it's only a 25% increase, but only is not a word I would use for increasing health insurance. So we're all doing what we can to raise money. I, I collect bottles and cans, and we've raised several thousands of dollars that way. So any break you can give us is much appreciated, because we are still growing. We don't have a bus, and that's a major drawback for many people who can't transport their kids to us. But we're getting many parents involved, on the board, the PTO. It's just, it's a slower grow than we would like, but it is growing. And the kids are fantastic, the teachers are fantastic. I don't know if any, have you come during the school day to see? It's exciting. And to have kids locally that when they're ill, you know, their parents can be there in five minutes if they forgot their lunch, if, you know, something's happened. So I would encourage you, and if you have any more specific questions, we'll try to answer them. Amy has this all documented, because that's the organizational person she is. But you're right, we had hoped, and actually, we, we agreed to the $1,000 because we really had no choice, but we were hurt by it because the daycare center.
We actually didn't agree.
Didn't, we, we just knew that that was coming though, because it was in your minds. Because this is your school. And to charge us to, to volunteer like we are and work so hard to build this school, you know, yeah, we were optimistic and we were naive, and we've learned a lot, but we're making it happen, and it's growing.
How's the relationship with the school district?
Fantastic. The superintendent is in full support of us. She is fully aware of, you know, where we're at with our budget, because we provide them monthly updates with our budget. They know where they're at, where we're at with our enrollment, with our projected enrollment for next year, and they're committed to keep us open, you know, as long as it's financially stable for us to do so. And with our budget that we approved in January, that's, you know, the, the trend that we're going towards.
What is your current enrollment and what is your projected enrollment?
So our current enrollment right now is 26 students. So we started out the year with 21. We were up to 28, but two students had to move to Texas unexpectedly. So our projected enrollment, and I always project best-case scenario, because that's what we want to project for, I hope to have 50 students next year. Currently, we have 35 enrolled for next year. So we have all summer to get students to come in. We have the first day of school, which is often when a lot of students show up who moved over the summer.
And you're going up one grade, right?
Yes, so this year, we're K through 2, and next year will be K through 3.
So that's why you have the 35? I mean, those, those students are?
Those students are new students being added either, well, they're mostly kindergartners, but we have students who are also transferring in.
Any other questions?
I, if you, Mike, if you need more specific numbers, I can definitely give those to you.
That's fine.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, need a motion?
Yeah, I move approval of the lease as presented. Instead of $100 a month as proposed by the, the academy, I would propose $100 a year as the amount.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion on that?
Could I, I do have a question about the, the length of time. It says, I think it's two years for the contract. I'd like to see it brought down to one year, so that we reconsider this next year.
Bruce?
Council McCarthy, I'd ask council to address that, because we did have a discussion about the time, and essentially, it does work out to be a one-year contract, as I understand it, so.
Well, that's definitely the council's prerogative to make it a one-year contract. I mean, right now, it does say 2020, so it would be, I remember when the last one terminated? Hypothetically, you know, July 1st, or today through, you know?
It would be June, June 30th was when this contract expires.
Sure, okay, so, thank you. So it would be June 30th, 2019, if you wanted a one-year contract, or July 1st, 2018 to July 1st, 2019, if you want a one-year contract.
Why was the two years put in there and not one or three or five?
The original lease was for three years, and we, we wanted to reassess it after the first year because of the $1 per year.
I have no problem with the two years.
I don't either. You know, we're trying to get some of our contracts extended now, so that they're a little easier to maneuver, so I agree with George.
I do as well.
Okay, the motion stands? Any other discussion? Colleen?
Council McCarthy?
Yes.
Council President Benfield?
Yes.
Council Better?
Aye.
Council Ogilvy?
Yes.
Mayor Stidl?
Yes. We have a new contract.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Uh, last item is a resolution for the amended agenda. Consideration for the proposal, purpose of authorizing City of Cannon Beach to apply for transportation. Oh, yeah. Mark, this is yours.
About this time last year, I told you that we had not been awarded this grant, and you directed me to reapply for it when the, when the wagon came by again. So here we are. One of the requirements of a grant is a demonstration that the governing body supports the application in the form of a resolution. That's what I'm asking you to do tonight. I moved the budget up slightly at the suggestion of staff from ODOT. Otherwise, this is the same grant you've heard before. It's a request for ODOT and the Transportation Growth Management Program to fund a transportation system plan for the city, very much analogous to the water and sewer master plans that you just finished last year. So we recommend that you approve the resolution. If you do, I will submit the grant application and supporting materials on Thursday or Friday.
I move approval of resolution number 18 day 07.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Colleen?
Council President Benfield?
Yes.
Council Better?
Aye.
Council Ogilvy?
Yes.
Council McCarthy?
Yeah, excuse me, yes.
Mayor Stidl?
Yes. That ends our agenda, thank you. Monthly status report, anything special I need to know? No?
Just the material's in there, yes, sir.
Okay. I have no communications that I know of.
I have a question on the staff report, I'm curious about, there's a report on the Haystack Rock awareness of the surveys, surveys on Haystack Rock of the seabirds and so forth. I'm wondering, is there's anybody here who knows the results of those surveys? No?
I don't, but we can get you a report on it.
And I have one other question on the, gotta get to my notes here. Here, Chris, what, what is a fail-to-install ignition interlock device?
Someone who's been ordered by the court, because they've had, only driving under the influence or multiple, so they have to have an interlock device put on the car that they have to blow into in order for the ignition on the car to start.
I've never heard of that. So this is someone who was supposed to have one that didn't?
Did not, and so they recite it.
So this, in order to start the car, you have to blow into it, and if you don't pass the, the test, you, it won't start?
Correct.
Got to have one of those.
It's a good thing.
Any other questions? Should we commence?
Yeah, under the other planning matters, there's a reference to the Jeff Nicholson property that we've heard of discussion or comments on beginning the meeting. And I guess I'd like to know, other than having sent a letter and some meetings, what enforcement activities or actions have been or can be taken to address that issue? Because it is an ugly eyesore. And just saying, I mean, he'll lie to you over and over. You can't just take him at his word.
Yeah, obviously, our first goal is to get him to plant it himself, and then I believe we're going to have to follow up with threats of a fine of some sort. He had told me in May that he was going to be working with Beth Holland to prepare the landscaping, get that done this spring. Spring is pretty rapidly eroding here, so I will follow it up, you know, I guess with more threats at this point.
But other than threats, what?
I guess ultimately, we can go in and do the work ourselves and lean the property, that would be my, my last choice. But if that's what needs to be done, that is one thing we can do, that's a tool open to us.
Since he is trying to sell it, that might be one way to finally get the money, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, we should do a letter, I think, signed by either you, Mark, or the city manager, with a suspend date, you know, if this isn't done by this date, then, you know, fines or further action will be taken. So if we do a written?
Yeah.
Letter.
But didn't you already do something like that? I mean, you've already?
I, I copied you on an email I sent him sort of mid-April or towards the end of April, and he responded to that, saying, yes, I will get this work done, the planting of the living wall done this spring, and he was going to be working with Beth Holland, but I just haven't heard anything since then. So since, since, yeah, he's.
Escalating action.
Yeah, he, he didn't blow me off, but he hasn't followed through, so I think the escalating letter makes sense in this case.
I guess I'd like to see something coming from the city attorney taking the next step. next step prior to doing everything they need to do prior to placing a lien.
Has he applied for any building permits?
He did, but he has not done any work on it. We issued a building permit for one dwelling there.
You did issue it, so we can't deny a building permit based on the fact that he hasn't followed through on the fence?
We might be able to. I, it hasn't come up. He doesn't have any others pending at the moment. We can also, we could cancel out the one he has, but honestly, I don't think he's doing, he's not gonna be doing any work on it anyway, so I'm not sure that...
Well, you don't know that.
Well, you're right. We probably could cancel it out. I'm not sure what effect
that would have, though. But you're right, we can also, future building permits could be held up for this, too. That's another...
It should be. I mean, if he's not following through on one thing, why should we allow him to follow through on anything else?
But what are you planning to do? Sell lots?
Well, he has sold, he's sold one of them at least. He may have sold two of them already.
I keep getting a question from somebody who should know about this, but has he filed with the county all of the, you know, the conditions that you've put onto the property? Wasn't he supposed to file within a year?
Yeah, he had to file the subdivision plat, and that is recorded.
It is recorded, okay.
Mark, the, as I recall, the property, the separate sections had designed structures on them, for them. When they sell, do they have to follow those designs, or can somebody buy it and just build whatever they want it?
The answer's kind of in between those two. He imposed some building envelopes on those that are somewhat more restrictive than our code would be, would allow. And there's a square footage maximum that is somewhat more restrictive than our code would allow, so that his, people would have to follow those numerical standards, but they would not have to build the, he sold some, I believe he called them conceptual house plans or elevations at one of the meetings, and he would not be bound to those because those are not conditions of approval. So the numerical standards that did make it into the conditions, yes, he has to follow those.
Okay. And if we were to get to a point where we did a lien, would they affect the properties that are already sold?
It's a good question. I don't know the answer to that.
I don't think so.
Well, they do have to comply with the planned development guideline.
Right.
So, I don't know, I guess, whenever who bought the lots decides to build, I suppose that might be another opportunity that I'd rather see. So after the, the story is, he kept the best lot for himself to build his own home and sold the others or their pending sale. And that's the one that had value that we might do a place of leaning on before it's found a way to apply that in a corporation's.
Yeah, that may be true.
We'll research all of these options.
The other, I was questioning that gentleman, Jeff said that the old cabin was demolished?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's correct.
My understanding was that was just gonna be upgraded.
No, he was going to take it down and then rebuild it.
Yeah, he, there were several different stages of his proposal. One was to upgrade the cabin, another one was to salvage some of the material out of it, and the, when we actually saw the building permit, it was just basically a new house and may use some of the paneling or something on the interior, but no, the cabin's gone.
All right. Well, let's pursue that as aggressively as possible.
Okay, thank you.
And along those lines, Mr. Mayor, I was just talking to counsel, and we, I don't know if you want to authorize the manager, like, have us go ahead and do the research and then come up with an aggressive response, or do you want us to bring it back to you at a meeting? But we think we need to do something pretty quick. But one of my concerns, and I don't know who it was that brought it up, and we don't have the definitive answer right now, is if he was to sell, what controls do we have or what leverage do we have over the lots that he sold or the next buyer or whatever? So we want to, we need to move pretty quickly, and I hear you saying we want to be aggressive on it, so I would suggest that either, I don't know if we, we have another meeting coming up, I think, the...
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday, or if you want to authorize the manager to sign to keep things moving.
Yeah, I would.
Also, I would assume that any restrictions we put on were applying to the property and not to any particular lot. So it would seem that those restrictions would have had to passed on to the new owner. They would have to be aware, for full disclosure, they'd have to be aware of any restrictions put on that property.
That's correct, and the both buyers that I've dealt with, they, I made sure they had copies of the conditions in their hands, and the conditions go with the property, not with the owner. So you're absolutely correct.
And to make them aware that any future development on their part may be been denied if the conditions aren't met.
I've not said that, but yeah, that may be the case.
Am I hearing that that's something that all of us are in agreement on?
Yeah.
I am. And that may already be in place, but I would like to review it to make sure that we have the continuity in regard to whoever owns the property, and also the individuals that have bought subparts of it also have their responsibilities. Make sure we've got somebody that we can go after for it.
One other clarification. You say he has a building permit application?
He has an, he has an approved building permit for the northwestern lot that he has retained, but he's not acting on it, and that was six months ago at least.
Do those permits expire after a year?
Yeah, they'll expire due to inactivity. I don't have the dates on it in front of me, but it's coming up in the next few months, I would guess.
Well, expect to see him go out there with a backhoe and dig a hole, say he has activity.
Would you keep us abreast of what you're doing?
Sure.
Okay. Mark, you had something else you wanted to...
Yeah, you established the South Wind Improvements Advisory Board a couple months ago. We're meeting this Thursday, and I, I guess I'd like some clarification on what products you expect from them at the end of the day, so that when we start our meeting, we can try to make sure we're going in the same direction you expected them to go in.
I had anticipated we were gonna have a work session for that very purpose before they met the first time. So that's kind of what I was figuring we'd be doing. I'm not sure if we want to try and do that right now.
Maybe that's your answer.
But I do agree, before they meet, you know, they need to have, you know, a direction. You know, we need to not have them, you know, spend a bunch of time coming up with ideas that we say, no, no, that's not what we wanted you to do.
Can we put that on next week's work session? Is it kind of late?
They have a meeting coming up, so...
Well, I can, we can delay the meeting if that's, if that's the council's wish, yeah.
Would you like to add that to the workshop agenda?
I think we should, don't you, George?
We already got four things, four big ones.
Okay, I will tell that committee that we're gonna postpone that meeting for at least a week until after you've met. Thank you.
Seems like that's for their benefit.
Yeah, none of them want to waste their time either, so that makes sense.
Okay. Anybody else? Have anything else for the good of the order?
I don't have to.
Technically, what, the good of the order is just for us. The public comment phase at the beginning of the meeting is for...
I think it's here at 20 after 6:00.
I know.
That was early.
I know, I'm sorry. Is it really juicy? Come on up, and we'll...
It's why we publish an agenda, though.
I know. You know I can come just for fun.
You are a cool mom, so.
Elaine, Mayor Pio, back for us before. Bruce, welcome to Cannon Beach.
Thank you.
You've not spent a summer with us here yet. Happy, cool summer?
This is, well, I was here for a week.
Yeah.
Isn't that summer?
So, once again, we are heading into our lovely traffic season. We, again, parking's always gonna be an issue. My concern is, has always been and will continue to be the flow of traffic. If we can keep the flow moving, it will be beneficial to all of us who live here. I would really love, as many people that I have talked to would love to see a three-way stop sign at Hemlock and Sunset. It is deadly dangerous when those cars back up all the way to the highway on our busy summer days. If we can keep the traffic moving, one's a loss, then they go, then the tourists cross, then the car goes. Instead of that traffic backing up, it's not gonna solve the parking problem, however, it can keep the traffic moving. Someone's gonna get killed there, back on the highway when those cars back up. We had a traffic monitor a couple weeks ago, and we had a busy weekend, and they had taken part of Spruce Street by the park. It would be lovely if we could use our bicycle cops. I mean, I don't know what you guys have been looking at lately, on the corner of Hemlock and Second downtown. Move the tourists, we love them, but move them across the street all at once. Stop, okay, let's put 10 cars through. Let's get some cars through. We're always gonna have traffic, and we're never gonna have enough parking. One-way street on Spruce, one-way on Hemlock would be awesome, but that's gonna complicate things. That traffic, a triple stop sign up there, it's not rocket science. You know what? Wouldn't it hurt to try it for a summer? Let's try and keep the traffic flowing, because as you guys all know, you cannot come in off of Sunset on a busy day here. The sun is out, the cars are backed up, it's deadly. Someone will die, and then everybody will go, oh, we should have tried. Let's just try something this summer. It's coming. We're all gonna lose our minds, but maybe we can try a little step. Thank you, Hemlock.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Mark, is there, there's a requirement, isn't there? ODOT requires you to have a certain number of cars or some kind of count or something before putting up stop signs or especially...
ODOT does have warrants, they call them, kind of a numerical standard for stop signs and traffic lights and those kinds of traffic control devices, but that's not a state highway there, so we would be, we would be well-advised to follow their standards, but we're not obligated to.
And I'm sure we would meet every standard that they require as far as traffic count there.
Well, I wouldn't be so sure about that. I mean, yeah.
Because it's, they average it over a year. It's not gonna be just for two months.
Yeah.
And then the other part of it, too, is that, you know, if you put up a four-way stop or a three-way stop, then everybody will stop, out of season, whatever. So you create other things. And I think, you know, Chris, you know, we've talked about this, and Chris was out there two, three weeks ago, and you were directing traffic, and there was no place to put anybody.
With the crosswalks there, because you hit three crosswalks when you start heading north. And so the pedestrian traffic, we bring people in off the highway, but as soon as we get them turned, it just stops, and there's no place to send them to, because all those people crossing the crosswalk. So I agree with you, but I'm just not sure what the solution is.
You know, and I agree, but every year, we have this same perception all through town, all the time, and we never try anything different. We never try. We just talk.
Well, we changed things. We changed things up at Fresh Market, Fresh Foods Market because of that kind of a five-way intersection. We put those, somebody calls them pops, little sticks or something.
We put some other little...
And, well, my point is, Elaine, we did do something, and it did improve it. So I think...
So we did that, and it worked. So why would, why can't we try something else? Because that probably was the discussion either for, I don't know, 10,000 years. Let's try something. It's coming. We're all gonna start whining and crying and badmouthing our tourists and saying bad things, because it's coming. It's gonna happen. And every year, we say, oh, my gosh, I've never seen it so rapid. Oh, my gosh, I've never seen it so busy. I've never seen so many cars. We are a tourist destination. Let's try and keep it moving. Keep the traffic. They can't find a place to park, but we should drive them in somewhere.
Well, Elaine, certainly you're not bringing anything up new. You know, this is, and it's certainly not something that hasn't been studied by the police department, by the city. So, you know, I think that, you know, I trust that our police department, and I'm sure, you know, Chris, you know, I've studied that situation a lot, and if a three-way stop were the best thing there, it probably would be there by now. So, you know, just, just because...
What about a crosswalk? What about a crossing guard? Does that get school?
Well, like I say, it's, it's good that we study it continually, but, you know, don't think that it's not being studied because there's not a three-way stop there.
We study a lot of stuff here.
Chris?
We study, and we study, and we talk, and we say it's not gonna work, but we don't ever try. We try the freshies, and it works.
Chris, are the bike cops boys qualified to do traffic control like that?
No, they're high school students. A lot of them are college students, and, you know, they don't have any formal training.
That's, that's pretty challenging to do that.
Yeah, that's, I mean, and Chris was doing it, and he couldn't find a place to put people. I mean, that's, you know, that's one of the problems, you know, that you would just have so much going on that even if you have people stopping at the stop signs, then they would still, before somebody wanted to make a left onto Sunset, for example, they would still have to wait until there was a clearing there.
Right. And I'm intimately aware of intersections, because I watch one daily, but I would be, I would be interested to try it. I think it would be worth a test, and I understand the concept that once you train people to stop there, they will stop after you take the signs away.
I'm not sure, well...
But I understand that, because...
But I wouldn't, if we're gonna put them up, I'm not sure I would take them down. Because then, if you've created a situation which considers safer, you go ahead and you take them down, and something happens, then you could face another liability.
Yeah, and I agree with that, too. And so I, I would really like to see that looked at more carefully and, and, you know, if...
If we were gonna do it, I would recommend, you know, I know everybody's tired of studies, but there, you can have an engineer take a look at it and tell you, is this gonna be better, is it gonna be worse, how much better if it's gonna get better?
Right.
And what the outcomes are. But just to try it, especially with, you know, the summer staff that we have, I mean, I would only trust that, you know, to a police officer.
Right.
And we've done that, and there's, you know, there's no more chairs. I mean...
And I know that by watching First Street.
Right.
And the thing is that there, people are already trained to stop. The, what causes First Street and Hemlock to jam up is when somebody stops when there isn't a stop sign. That's what causes, and that's, and the pedestrians. So putting stop signs might not be a better answer, but it might be worth a try. So, I don't know. I'd like to see it looked at a little better.
If you'd authorize us, I would have an engineer take a look at that for us, or if you wanted to order us to install stop signs, we can do that, but that would not be our recommendation.
If you want to study traffic, this would be a good weekend. San Castle weekend.
Watch the progress. One more suggestion.
I'm gonna go home.
You know those brilliant little white things that, down in Fresh?
Candestries.
You know the sign that says right in front of Haystack Rock, when you're trying to come out of Pacific or go down Pacific, there's just no stopping, no standing, everybody except for your car? You put a couple of those white things there, people wouldn't park there, and that traffic wouldn't stop going down Pacific and coming out either. Just white stuff. I'm done.
Okay. Well, then, when Elaine is done, I think we're all done.
It all begins with that.
July 3rd.
Oh, meeting.
Oh, the meeting, yeah. Do we want to have a meeting on the 3rd? Because that's the day before 4th of July.
If not, we would couple it with the work session.
Either that or bump the work session a week and just bump the whole thing a week. That was another idea that came up, so...
I'll be gone the last week in July when I could participate, uh, you know, for whatever meeting I'm in.
I have no problem right now with the 3rd, myself. I'm not going anywhere.
I'd rather do that than have another...
Yeah, I'm not going anywhere.
...meeting if I can find it.
I'm going somewhere, but I'm flying back, so I'm gonna be back for that meeting on the 3rd.
Nancy, you okay?
It's fine with me, yeah.
We're doing the 3rd, Colleen. Okay? We are adjourned. Thank you.